Good evening. Today is Thursday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is five thirty P M. I will call this meeting of the Amber School Board to order. I'm Shannon Gascoigne, Vice Chair. I'll be presiding over the meeting. As our Chair, Mr. Tom Gauthier is traveling and unavailable. Mr. Gauthier and I worked together to prepare for this meeting, and he looks forward to presiding over our next meeting. Um, member Terry Bean will be joining us shortly. We do have a floor in present, so we will go ahead and get started. If you, um, I don't see anyone open, um, here in the room, so we will go ahead and open the first public comment. Um, we will accept public comment virtually. So if you are attending virtually, thank you for your engagement. You can follow along with our agenda. We've just posted it online at S A U thirty-nine dot org. Under Boards and select Amber School Board. If you are attending online and would like to make a public comment, please raise your virtual hand and you will be moved to panelist. At which time, please turn on your camera and have your full name in the avatar, state your name and town of residence, and you will have three minutes to address the board.
We have three attendees with no hands up.
Give it just a moment in case someone needs to find their virtual hand.
It's on the virtual arm.
Okay, seeing no comments online and no one in the room, we will close our first public comment. There will be another public comment at the end of our meeting. Following along with our agenda this evening, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Okay, we're just getting started. Is the consent agenda. We have two items in the post-stated consent agenda. Before I open it up for board discussion, I would like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Barry to discuss item one, unanticipated revenue. So, you have something to say, Barry?
Yeah, so, uh, what we'd like to do is we're gonna pull uh, the first item. Uh, Steve Chairman, you wanna explain where we're at with that?
Absolutely. I very much appreciate Beth and Kristen working together on a grant with the Bean Foundation. Um, the Bean Foundation has supported one of the extraordinary activities I've seen, which is the pig heart in the past. Um, and this year they submitted, uh, because it was so connected to the procedure of uh, utilizing the, the Bean Grant to enhance experiences. They included a safety item um, to the enhancement fund. That's really, truly, uh, Kristen and I, um, which we engaged about that process earlier because we do believe the Amber School District can support safety items in our schools. And so as we discussed that, very much appreciate Beth and her work. Um, there, there's significant work ahead, and Beth is really tackling it about organizing all the storage spaces in the, in the science labs. And just recently, um, again, she did locate, uh, the proper equipment to implement that grant. So we are going to work with Bean revised, and as I said in board notes, we're sin revised and utilize the grant for something else. But we are absolutely, uh, we, we enjoy working with the business side and making sure that all safety items are provided. And, uh, we had no time to default budget. Um, put kids at risk. Um, we do have the ability either after transferring to the board or the functions at ourselves to make sure that we support those youngsters. Um, in the future, I, I, I could have provided a little bit more connection on this, and I'm happy to do that. Uh, but we do appreciate Bean's support for the Amber Schools. And we'll be resubmitting and, and again, appreciate Beth, because when a teacher submits a grant, that is above and beyond their work. And Beth is very passionate about providing unique, extraordinary opportunities for kids and passionate about understanding all the equipment necessary in our school after all these years. So I think we're in a good place. We'll be communicating appreciation to Bean and working with Beth and Kristen to resubmit, and we're in a great place. Thank you for the board's grace on this. And Kristen, please extend to Beth, and I will too, and I see her, just appreciate her effort um, about applying and making sure the kids have an experience. But we are withdrawing it because we're gonna withdraw the grant, and then we'll resubmit. Um, and when we need to, we'll wait.
Great, thank you. So we will be withdrawing item one from the consent agenda. Does anyone have any additional questions? Great. So at this time, does anyone have any discussion regarding the four eighteen draft minutes, item two in the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will accept a motion to accept the consent agenda with only item two, the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four draft minutes. May I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Bean makes the motion. May I have a second? It's seconded, uh, by Mr. White. It is moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda with item two only April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four draft minutes. Is there any further discussion? All right, I will call both. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Onto the next agenda item. We have reports and memos, which includes our principals' reports and facilities updates. Before we move into questions, I would like to open up the floor to Principal Gauthier, who has a presentation and update to share with us on her and her team's work around grading and reporting. Principal Gauthier, welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gascoigne. Um, so we are, um, I, I had said in our last report, uh, in April, that we would share with you a presentation in May regarding, uh, our progress with the changes we're making to grading and reporting at the middle school. So I wanted to make good on that. Uh, even though we don't have every single detail worked out, um, and there's some things still in process. Uh, I wanted to make sure that I gave you, uh, as thorough of an update as I could at this point, given the, the work done. Um, I also want to just give a quick shout out to our committee. We have teachers who've been coming in every two weeks at seven thirty in the morning uh, to come work with us, uh, on, on this work. Um, and so that is a commitment, and they feel strongly about, um, you know, doing anything that they can to, to support this work. So, um, I just want to thank the committee. Um, and then also, obviously, the support of the S A U, uh, with Steve and Christine and Mike, they've all been very helpful to me, uh, when it comes to, um, just, you know, obviously figuring out the history, where we've come from, and then, uh, helping me in, in terms of guiding where we're going. So, um, it just, I think that's important to mention that this is not a me thing, this is a us thing. Um, the other piece that I think is really big here is really we're building on the work that's been done in the past here. Um, moving to standard space from traditional grading is no small feat. So there's been an extremely, uh, you know, large amount of work done by Christine, by Bethany, uh, by the, you know, people here who, who did this work eight years ago, seven, eight years ago. Um, switching to standards, pulling out the work study practices, making that shift from competency-based grading to more of a standard space model. So, um, those, some of the, the hills that we have to climb, um, are easier to climb because that work has already been done. So our teachers, I think, already have the philosophies in place. Um, I think our families have the philosophy in place. And so, um, for us, that, that heavy work has been done, and really this is just so, um, I think it's important just to mention that. So I included in the presentation, um, the purpose of grading and reporting. Um, so, uh, you can read through it. It comes from our Mastery Race Grading and Reporting, uh, staff handbook. For me, um, you know, the, the things that I look at as a principal is, uh, enhancing communication with families and students. Um, enhancing communication also within the building internally, so that we're sitting down, we're talking about students, we're able to pull up their current progress and have a discussion about what we need to do to best support their individual needs. Um, and so that is something that, um, we want to, uh, just increase the efficiency of with this. Um, and, uh, you know, in order to, to do that, the other, you know, the other piece of this as well is we're preparing them. Um, my fifth graders are not high schoolers, but someday they will be high schoolers. So, um, we're, um, trying to make sure that we are doing it in a developmentally appropriate way. Um, that makes sense for middle school students. Why make a change? So, so when I did entry interviews, uh, when I came in to start my entry plan, one of the pieces that people had talked about was grading and reporting, um, and just a desire for some more clarity. Um, I think we have a very high level of clarity at the standards level. Um, and we're looking for, uh, everybody to better understand those skills and, um, competencies that we want students to be able to master. And then also efficiency, um, the current system that we're using, it definitely is time intensive, and I think, um, it's, it's just kind of weighing out where we want to place our time. And so, um, putting in the number of standard, putting in grades for the number of standards and, and, um, uh, assessments, uh, can be tricky sometimes and, uh, was a, a heavy load on teachers. And I would like to be able for them to use that time for planning and instruction. And I think that's really where we're gonna get the, the biggest bang for our buck there. So, um, we'll see, time will tell. I could be telling you it's gonna be more efficient, and it may not be. But the hope is that what the things we put in place will, will help with that. Process wise, uh, just to walk you through it a little bit. So our committee, we established a staff committee. So we had people, we had people from different grade levels and different departments in the building. Um, and we began regular meetings, um, and then we did some research. So, um, research on, on current, you know, best practices in grading, but then also about what other middle schools are doing as well. So what is it looking like around us? And much like a master schedule, um, many of the middle schools I talked to, nobody's in love with their grading necessarily. Everybody I talked to was like, we're doing this, but I think we're gonna move to this, or I think we need to improve this. So it's a work in progress everywhere. We're not the only ones in that boat, and that was comforting, um, and affirming, for sure. Uh, we also had a Zoom family focus group, which I think I mentioned in my last board report or my earlier board report this year. Um, talking about with, with families, we had about twenty or so members within the group. Uh, various grade levels, various backgrounds, and they were able to just give us input on how they've, um, what they want to see. Um, now, it wasn't so much a commentary on, you know, what we're doing now as much as what do you want to see, what do you want to know, and how do you want to know it? So I think it's important that if we are creating, uh, you know, a communication chain, or we're creating a way for people to get information, that we're doing it in a way that makes sense and is gonna work for them. Because we might think it works great, um, in one way, and for others, they might not be able or ready to absorb that. So that is something that I think was important is just finding out what people want. And there were things that I thought people would want, they didn't, or, you know, vice versa. So I think it was enlightening and helpful to get that input. And then, um, during January and February, um, Mr. Shutter and I visited every launch pad in the building. We talked about a couple of big issues, um, just in general. One of them was grading and reporting. So we sat with students, we asked them again, the same thing. Um, how do you, how do you feel like you understand your current progress? Um, do you like this? You know, do you like the one to four? Do you like the letter grade? Do you like, um, you know, what, what's gonna make the most sense to you? So that was very interesting and enlightening, and that gave us some information going forward about what would be helpful for students. Um, and then we've been working on the development piece. Um, originally, um, our goal was to, um, align with our Portrait of a Graduate, S A U thirty-nine Portrait of a Graduate, in a similar way that South Hegan did when they made this transition a couple of years ago. They've also been, or let's forget two years ago. They've been incredibly helpful, by the way, as well. Dana Curran and Elizabeth Charbonneau have been very helpful in, in giving me um, their thoughts on, on their process when they did that. But, um, we, uh, have been, you know, at first we thought that that was gonna work best for us, and then we backtracked after talking to teachers and meeting with people and having some good conversations that every subject is a little bit different. And so we need to make the middle school version that's gonna work for us. Um, the example I can give you for that, um, one of the major categories on the high school grading and high school report card is, um, you know, say, knowledge, knowledge constructor. And our English Language Arts Department felt like, or Humanities, really, Social Studies and English Language Arts felt like there wasn't a good way to show that. And they wanted to break it down into reading, writing, language, listening. They wanted to break it down into those components. And so that was a, you know, a signal to us that, you know, maybe each department is a little bit different, and, uh, the goal of this is to make things clear and not to convolute it. So we wanted to make sure we did, um, did the right thing. So we kind of re-met with all the groups and figured out what the individual competencies would be. So we think we have a really great set of individual competencies. Um, and that's what comes to my next, my next slide. Um, so we are still using standards, we are still using, we are still looking at standards, we're still planning with standards, we're creating assessments based around standards. Um, that's incredibly important. We need to make sure that we are giving students the skills that, um, are helping students attain the skills and knowledge that they need to move on. But, um, what we're looking at is when we report out, we're gonna report out on some larger, we keep saying buckets, but larger groupings of buckets. Right now, on the current report card, you see those larger buckets. Um, current progress report, you see those larger buckets. Um, but, uh, we, those are kind of, um, a grouping of all the standards that have been put in by teachers. So teachers will not be putting in by the standard level, they'll be putting in by assignment and saying which competency they go with. Um, so standards are still gonna be used, the competencies are just larger groupings of those standards, larger buckets of those standards. Um, the example I often give is in science, because that's my wheelhouse. Um, but three major buckets for science, which we've played around with this year and have put the standards into there on the current report card is, um, knowledge, scientific knowledge, scientific investigations, um, and scientific literacy. So those are three areas that as a parent, knowledge is, is, you know the stuff, do you know science? Investigations, can you do science? And literacy is, can you read, write, speak science? And so when you get an assessment, it might fall into one or more buckets. Um, and that could be an assessment on uh, genetics, and that could be an assessment on, uh, earth systems and geology. But it would still, we're, the, the important piece to us was being able to show parents, like, for me personally, I think about I don't necessarily need to know that my student doesn't understand tectonic plates, but I would like to know if they are struggling to do scientific investigations or struggling with literacy. So looking at what level of information and, and, um, what's gonna be most appropriate for our own planning and what's most appropriate for, uh, when we're communicating outside. Um, I gave just a couple of examples. Um, I don't have my system up yet. Obviously, we're plugging things in the background right now with, uh, Kelly Mooney, who's been incredibly helpful. Um, but this shows, you know, you can look in and power at your students' grades by standard, which is, gives a ton of information. Um, and I think as an instructor and as an educator, it's really good information, uh, to be able to have. Um, and you can see there's strands on the left, very similar to, to competencies. Um, but teachers put in each and every grade, each and every piece in there. So it is, you can kind of see the efficiency piece there. And then, um, you know, when you look at your students' grades, you might see twenty-one of twenty-seven at or above proficient. And so, um, we're trying to figure out a way that parents get a quick glimpse of what does it mean? Like, is it proficient? Because they are really proficient, is it proficient? Because is it not proficient because they haven't gotten there yet? Like, what, what is the reasoning for the grade? Um, and I'll scan down to, um, the parent portal. So this is, uh, the, I pulled these screenshots off the internet, but I have experience with this program, so I can tell you they're valid. Um, and so the ability to see a course, look at an overall grade, click on it, and then dig in for more information. So digging into that information would give you the assignments and the competencies, uh, that fall within that, that course. Um, and then there's an app that goes with it, so it would allow you to see a quick snapshot, again, of the, of the competencies and the assignments that fell under those competencies. So that is something I've had experience with and has been a, a good communication tool. And again, online grading systems in general, all of them are passive communication tools. So there's more that we have to do here to educate and to communicate, which is what I'll get to next. So some major changes, um, we will see, you will see, uh, four to eight total competencies per course, some of those being achievement competencies, uh, when we talk about the academic piece and the standards. But then the other ones being, uh, work study practices. So we've started looking at, uh, our committee last week decided on, uh, three major work study practices. At the moment, we may have, end up with four. Um, but those competencies are include those work study practices, and that comes from some of the work we did, um, with, uh, Rick Warmley, um, who is a grading and reporting guru when it comes to competencies. And, uh, so he said no more than four to eight total competencies. Because we also need to make sure that we're assessing enough to put them in those large buckets. Uh, you don't want to have a competency that you only had one assignment in for the entire year. We want to make sure that we're, it's a good picture, a good overall picture. Uh, we have an updated proficiency scale. Um, it is zero to four, a zero meaning no evidence yet. No evidence yet. And, and again, we're not rating students here, we're rating evidence. So it's evidence, it's, it's the evidence that we're receiving. Um, so the zero reflects, I don't have evidence to look at. I don't have something to grade you on. So, um, that is a piece of, uh, a piece of the puzzle. Um, student-friendly rubrics. So we're gonna be doing a lot of work next year on our each individual department, grade level, working on student-friendly rubrics. And, um, so that students have a real clear picture of what the expectations are, how they get, how they're able to earn each grade, what kind of evidence they need to submit in order to earn each grade. Uh, and then that also, um, you know, the, the hope is that we're using those and refining those and continuing to work on those. Uh, there will be an overall course letter grade, um, which is something that came from the focus groups. People wanted a quick snapshot of overall, how are they doing in the course? Um, we are not going to, some districts calculate out to like, to percent out of a hundred. We're not doing that. We, it is a zero to four. Um, but that will, that will, um, translate into, but kind of like a GPA, the way they do at South Hegan, that will translate to a letter grade. So we're working on what that scale looks like right now. Um, and then, as I said, the new work study practices. So those work study practices are gonna be broken out into three areas, self-management, um, work completion and engagement. Um, teachers that we worked with, um, in the committee felt like those were the strongest areas. Those were the areas that we needed to kind of, like, pull out the most, uh, helpful information from. So one example, how do I know if my student's getting their stuff in on time? Work completion isn't there. Right? It's not part of the achievement grade, but it is communicative of whether work is being handed in on time and whether it's coming in. Um, and then, uh, finally, regular opportunities for teachers to share authentic evidence of student progress. One of the things that, um, Steve and I had spoken about, uh, and, and was a fabulous idea was the, um, telling teachers, telling students that we're gonna have one assessment per quarter that's going to go home to families, because sometimes families say, I don't see anything that comes home, and that, that's also just a seventh and eighth normal middle school thing. Um, and, uh, but being able to communicate, you can expect that today you're going to get an assessment that's going to come home. So that's another communication mode, so that families can see the work that's being done. Like, I can undersee my students' writing and understand it. Um, and see the rubrics and all of that, and, and, uh, just kind of strengthen that partnership. That was, that was really was one of the pieces of the focus group is I want to see what they're doing. Um, because a lot of so much, especially since COVID, is on Google Classroom and submitted electronically, and it's not always something families have access to. So we thought that was, that was important. And then we'll be, of course, working on what other, you know, if grading systems and online grading systems are passive communication, what are some of the things that are gonna make things more active communication? So we have teams that send out newsletters, right, about, and, and it's, it's inconsistent, mostly because I haven't put any consistency on it, but that's my plan going into next year. Um, about what we're doing, what assessments are coming up, what are we working on? Those types of, those types of pieces, because I think that is another piece of the puzzle. Um, even if it's ask your student about their science test this Friday, right? We're trying to put a little more onus on the student and, um, strengthen, you know, that piece of communication as well. And then, uh, next steps. Um, so, uh, we have to design a clear and concise progress report format. So I literally just gave all the competencies to Kelly Mooney, uh, and so she's working in the background to, uh, look at what that is going, to figure out what that's going to look like. She has, uh, been consulting, you know, other schools that have been using Power School and Power School Partner supports in order to make that happen. So, uh, she will hopefully have a draft for us soon. She wants to have a draft for us before we leave by the end of the year. So that would be awesome. Um, and again, and we're, our goal is to ensure that those calculations accurately report progress to everybody. And then we have a lot to do with planning professional development. Um, I want to make sure that my staff feels comfortable, that they feel knowledgeable, and that they, this is not a stress report that we start the year. So we're gonna spend significant time on, on professional development. And then, as I said, the work behind the grading, uh, or the rubrics and, and making sure that our assessments are aligned, and, and all of that kind of goes hand in hand. Uh, and then, like I said, continued learning and support through the school year. And then also, um, I think what's really important is developing a comprehensive student and family-friendly guide to grading and reporting. So how we are going to, um, answer questions, whether it be through um, face-to-face or Zoom, or whether it open houses, you know, how are we gonna consistently make sure that we are, um, sharing with families how they can be in the loop on this? Because it's only as good as, the communication's only as good as, you know, people being able to check it and people be able to understand it. And so I want to make sure that we, um, help people, especially, we do have people coming from Mont Vernon and coming from Wilkins, and you know, they're with, they're doing in power. So it's gonna be brand new for middle school people. Um, so that's, it's gonna be important that we are, uh, constantly commuting, communicating and helping to educate everybody on that. But, um, in general, I'm very happy with the work that's been done. I'm very grateful to the committee. Um, and I'm incredibly grateful to the work that's been done previous to this, because I think a lot of the hills to climb have been climbed. Um, and that's what makes this work even, even better. So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for all of the work and acknowledging the work of, of those before you getting up to this point. Um, I'll open it up to the board for questions for Principal Gauthier. Mr. Chris?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Um, my first question's about stability of the system. So I don't know how long last was around, how long was last is around for? And then how do you evaluate this system and like, to know if it's doing something that you like, or if you want to change it again?
Sure. So there's, I mean, there's a couple, when we say system, we say it's, it's our procedure surrounding, right? The, the grading and reporting. And then there's also like the actual software itself. Right?
Right. The system of how you're grading.
Yeah.
For, is that, how, how stable was that before this? Is it changing for this or just doing a software?
So it's a mix of things. I would say that we're still, the, the big, the big, uh, lift that was done, uh, seven or eight years ago was more about separating, you know, getting away from traditional grading and, and going to one to four scale and separating our work study practices, you know, the effort, the homework, those types of things from the academic achievement grade, which, I know when you and I were in school, it was probably you got like twenty-five percent of your grade was your homework, and thirty percent was tests, and fifteen percent was quizzes, right? So that, that, when I first got into teaching twenty years ago, that was the thing, right? So the, the big lift has been moving away from that and having the grade really reflect what students know and are able to do. So really, the philosophies behind that, that, that is staying. These are kind of small tweaks that we hope will kind of increase, um, communication and, and clarity.
So I think, what, how do you measure how well this is working and how long do you, like, are you waiting one year to kind of think about it? Like the curriculum we talk about, you know, teachers have to kind of teach a new curriculum. It's a little bit of a of an energy penalty to learn a new system before you get into the smooth sailing section. So is there an equivalent here where you're not really sure? Are you thinking of the grading system for first year? Are you gonna let it go for a while before you reevaluate? Or is it cost evaluation? How do you think about?
I, I view it as, as constant evaluation. I mean, I think next year, we're gonna, you know, to be honest, it's a bit of a pilot, right? It's the first year we're doing it. So we're gonna have to get feedback from families, from students, from staff. Um, and it's education. I'm always looking to change and make things better. So I think that's, that's gonna be, that's no question to me next year that I will be, be looking at that. But, um, I, it wouldn't hurt to, you know, obviously survey people as a bigger group, and in addition to a focus group, and find out how, how they feel communicated with.
Okay, my last question is about parents. Is there a parent sign-off when you send home those quarterly reports, or is it just a one-way, you send it home, but there's no parent sign-off, and it has to come back?
Yeah, we have not dug into it a hundred percent yet, but I appreciate that's, that's good feedback, just to ensure that the communication is done. I, I don't know where we'll go with it.
I've been at middle school once. I think you have to have the parent sign-off.
Right, yeah.
At least we're gonna notice.
Right, right.
And so, I mean, and we're gonna tell the kids.
Right.
That, look, this writing, this writing assessment is the one that's going home. Because Kristen's right, we, even last year when I was in that scene, it was, it was pretty powerful. When parents, they didn't feel, see the actual work. And trying to engage them in understanding personal performance of their youngsters. Um, it's just really important to see an actual, not just a score, but the actual paper where we saw their work. There might be a little bump in air, but, well, I know my parents can see. It's, it's all a pilot. I think there's a lot of stuff here. I think it's clarity and efficiency. We've got some shots.
What else, Ken?
First, thank you for the really comprehensive approach. I think that, um, I appreciate the listening part of both the teachers, what's working for you, what's not, parents. And I think the number one thing that I've heard from parents is I don't know when to worry. Like, this is what I always tell my doctor, and just tell me one, I should be worried. And so for parents are like, I think they're doing well, but I'm not sure. And, um, I think that we have kind of gone the too much information, not enough, somewhere in between. And when you're still mid-evaluation, it's like, okay, it's expected that you don't know it all yet, you're not there. So I really like that this is giving, uh, that snapshot approach of, like, it's on the right track, it's not the final, but it lets them, and I like that the word you keep going back to is communication, because that's really what it is. You're, you're communicating to teachers, where do we still need, have work to do to get them where they need to be. You're communicating with parents, uh, we support our student to get them where they need to be, and committing to the students, you know, where do they still have? And so, um, I, I really like that we're keeping the things that are working for us, that we're not just throwing everything.
No, no.
And then saying, hey, our philosophy is still, we want everyone to get there. This is not assorting and stacking. This is, we want to get you all there, and this is helping us to know if we got you there. So I appreciate all the work, and I know that it is, um, it is not an easy lift in any way. But thank you for, um, really moving and into listening to those who have said, I want to know. And I, I don't feel like what you're giving me right now is, is letting me know. I still, I can't comprehend it. So I'm excited to see some of the results.
Me too. Thank you.
One of the things I hope, so, I, I don't have many hours. We spent a significant number of hours considering, patching this out. And there was always, there's always tension for me. Because I'm, I said the other day, I'm super. I'm like crazy. I am way as far as the trenches that you can be. And there was, the tension for me is the propensity in public ed, not just here, but everywhere, to use the grade as the key to motivation. And there was that tension for me, lots of discussions. Because Because the research and what we want to instill in, in part of our mission is to have this process of learning. And one of the things that I, I'm getting me more and more focused on is connecting planning to feeling of effectiveness. And I believe the time spent planning, engaging hooks, meeting kids' voice and choice, understanding what they want to learn and connect them will far engage students more than this. So that's the balance for me. We have to look at grading and reporting. It is our, Kristen says it all the time, our number one communication with families. But I want to make sure that we look to planning and understanding what kids want to learn and connecting what they want to learn with the standards we, we believe they have to learn to support their engagement and not focus on the grade as a supportive nature. And to be completely honest, public education is not there. I, I talk like, I'm close to a college professor. It's not really someone in the trenches, but it is the work. It is the work. Kids, we know short term motivation on this grade, long term motivation to interest. We know that. And Kristen's done a great job of listening and moving it as far as we can right now with this group. With the voice about let's make sure that we are connecting planning. Because one of the things we've spent a lot of time, and we're going to spend a lot more time talking about even at the retreat this summer, is how do we ensure our teachers feel affected? Whether they're one to five or 30. Because if you want to leave work every day feeling unaffected, you know, I'm not effective. I'm not, and we heard Christine and I talked about this as a teacher member, who didn't feel effective. That's burning. That's not engaging. And planning is connected to effectiveness. 100% believe. You spend a lot, and I did this as a teacher. When I planned really well, I was a good teacher. When I won it, average teacher, my first four years, bad teacher. My, my 26th time I got out over two, I won it pretty good, but not good enough. And grading is a communication piece. I don't want to be crutch as hell, this is going to fix our learning. It's not going to. Some kids are simply not motivated by that, but they can be motivated by the content. So we're not done for that piece of the rest.
I do firm, I do firmly believe though that if we have better communication with families or just clear communication that works for families and the method that they want it, right? If I know that my student is struggling in an area, I, I'd say, you're not on YouTube in your room tonight. You're at the kitchen table with me and we're going to work on this. And I know that's not every family and every parent. And I'm not always the best at monitoring my own students' homework either. But I think that is one piece that it's just the knowledge and how can, or even just an email. I noticed this, how can I help them? Right? And, and we talked about the balance of that as well is allowing middle schoolers to have some of that independence. You know, the, there's, I've seen them on TikTok. There's memes out there where it's like, as soon as the grade comes in, the parents texting their kid, why, why didn't you hand this assignment in? And so we, we're trying to work on what that balance is going to look like as well in terms of parent notification and making sure that we're giving students some appropriate independence and, and ability to advocate for themselves as well. So before we hit them with like, it's, it's a zero. And then parents like, why is it a zero? Like immediately, you know, we want to try to, to help support them and help them figure it out themselves as well.
Mr. White?
So I don't really know who this common question is directed for. It's for Kristen or Steve. So Steve, I'm with you pretty much, right? I mean, that's having all the way, right? Teaching with intentionality, making the connections and all that. I think I view this as a, it's a potential step here. When I, I even made some notes on my little thing here where it said student friendly rubrics. I was hoping that that was then going to be coupled with like metacognition and students saying like, this is what I've learned. This is where, where I am and it's motivating me to learn.
Lots of talk of self-assessment. A lot, almost every.
And so initially I misread the new work study practices component. Because I undermined the word reflect and went, oh, it'd be grateful or reflection case is part of that. So students were reflecting like, well, this quarter or this, whatever the marking period might be, here are the things that I learned, here's what I'm motivated to learn next. And the copies and standards, at least in my experience in police, and make this different are more like skill based. So the, the, the knowledge component of it is really flexible for the student choice and voice, right? So I mean, I did ELAs, it's different obviously from science, but I'd like, the standard might be you can cite evidence from a literary text. Well, great, whatever literary text you read.
Yes.
Whatever you're interested in, it's going to motivate you to do it. So I don't, I view this as, you know, a potential to increase those opportunities.
Yeah, it has to. That's why I was at a meeting today, inside John, and it's John Dewey. Mike and I talk about John Dewey quite a bit. And the quote from John Dewey, we do not learn from experience, we learn from reflecting. Right, I'm throwing that in the mix too. That's going in the mix. But it is, and, and we've talked, one thing, I really appreciate Kristen, this year, wellness and others. We are really moving towards self-assessment, regular self-assessment as a legitimate part of the achievement communication. It is legitimate. And kids will, you know, that's the research. And Kristen's been pretty passionate about that and giving, trying to get teachers licensed. Because it's, what do you mean? No, she's giving teachers license to do this work.
Well, thank you. I'm also very appreciative and excited for this work. I, I agree with everything you said related to Kristen. You know, I think this is going to be a great tool for parents to support their students at home more effectively. And I'm excited to see more communication and, and the rollout of that. I think it will be well received. So are there any additional questions from anyone regarding grading and reporting before we move forward?
Steve? I guess I just have one additional question. So here are what Steve's saying, and I do think that we don't, like, we don't teach to the test. That's always been a thing in our district that we're proud of, that, that we teach to what we think is the, is the appropriate thing for our students. And, and so it's not that making grading clearer is going to be like, okay, great. I know I got my grade and now off I go, right? But I do think that being, it, it all feeds to each other. You don't, you don't know where you need to put extra attention either if you're not sure where you're struggling because it's not clear to you, it's not clear to your parents where they can give you support or work, work collaboratively with your teacher if they're not knowing. And for the teacher, if they're spending so much time with things that are super, I really like that piece of it, that we're trying to simplify part of it to where they can take that time from filling out a million matrices and instead have it for the student, it's clearer what the rubric is and what they're, what they're trying to accomplish. It's clearer for the parents to understand. It's clear all the way across. And then that time instead, you know, you actually said it went more towards planning and instruction. And so if you're putting that time towards planning instruction, you're more engaging.
I'm with you.
You're having the evidence base because for me, that's like the number one thing that all of this has brought is that it's a portfolio of evidence bases and not just, I've got my 98% good to go, you know, like. And so I think that they all, it's, it's a simple little thing that feeds into each other. And if this is a little less of a lift there, you've got more time for that. You have more time for that. That's going to be more there and then you have more time for that, you're more engaged.
Pick up what you're putting down.
All of it. So I think that you can serve both of those things. And, and I'm happy to see that I feel like the plan is that it will serve both of those things. And I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, at least the initial, the initial round. And then you find two, because that's what you do with anything.
That's what we do. We date most of the stuff. Eventually we'll get there.
So I have another name question. How do you, or what, do you have some kind of process in place to ensure that teachers in different classrooms, similar materials or somehow grading similarly? And even, you know, Jason and I are equal performers, but in opposite classrooms, that you get equal performance grade?
I think one of the big things that, you know, any, I say professional learning community, but our grade level departments. So like all of the, all of the seventh grade science teachers or all the sixth grade STEM teachers, right? One of the pieces that we talked about is the calibration. So taking sample student assessments, passing them around, you've given the rubrics that they've developed and be able to say, well, I would rate this a four or I'd rate this a two or three and here's why. And have those conversations. And I think that needs to be done regularly. And so part of what we're going to do at our August professional, during our August professional development is take some student work samples that we're going to collect this year because we won't have students in August yet. And sit down with our departments. And at that point, I'll have all my new staff there as well and be able to sit and calibrate and say, how would you rate this? How would you score this? But I think that needs to be continually done throughout the year. And so it's my goal to be able to do that during our workshop, you know, our professional development.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah.
Super, great questions. Thank you and thank you for that presentation. All right. So are there any additional comments, questions for our principals on their principals' reports or for superintendent baron facilities? Yes, Mr. White?
So this might be, it's kind of overarching kind of questions and thoughts that might be tied to our goals as well. So I've mentioned this stuff kind of before. So I just want to, I guess maybe I'm hyper focused on this, but I want our conversations to be related to what we say our goals are. So one of the goals and one of the things that is in pretty marked progress is the importance in communicating in terms of instructional time. So I guess my question is for both, is I know, I know we are obligated to SAS. I know we have, there's nothing we can do about that. But I'm just curious how much instructional time, we're putting this heavy value in instructional time? Are we losing to other testing things? So we might not be using that data to inform instruction and, and help kids get motivated. So for example, like MEA, is there value, like, what's the calculation versus how much time we're losing is, you know, like?
It's a choose.
Is that question, is that said, does that question make sense? Like how much instructional time are we losing? Is it, is it, is the data that we're, you know, mining from that informing what we're doing? So, okay, well, it's worth it. This is like a true authentic thing. Or is this some arbitrary thing we do as a public relations, lack for better term?
I mean, SAS we have to do.
I, right, I get that. Yeah, yeah. But I'm just wanting, I'm just, because again, one of the it's like instruction times, value.
Yeah.
How much, how many days, how much instructional time?
So just to start, because we, we restructured our testing this year and it actually made it so that it was taking, making it, it was less instructional time. Last year, SAS occurred like just throughout the month of May because we were all switching computers and then different schedules were, and, and then the hallways were loud because some people were testing, some people were not. And this year we got it down to four SAS, four total days. ELA reading, ELA writing, math, and then grades five and eight did science. So those were two hour chunks out of, and so that's eight hours of SAS total for this year. MEA was a little bit different. Those, we do do that out of core times and it's a little bit like, we have a window of dates. So, right, it's a, it's a little, a little different, but I can tell you that SAS was eight hours.
I appreciate the questions around this. We are constantly asking that question as it's, as a team with my interventionist, reading specialist, math interventionist. We actually just worked a little bit on this during the early release professional development yesterday. We narrow down our universal assessments based off of what is the absolute most important information we need to get about learners at this age, at this time of the year that is going to help us inform instruction, comply with our SAs surrounding dyslexia laws and then also help us make plans, right? Because like it's giving us the information of, is this cohort of students making adequate progress, right? As it relates to specific skills, but then also like some of those overall skills. We've talked before about, you know, MEA K2 looks at very different skills than our, you know, Eames web probes in, in literacy that are looking for things like initial sound fluency. Or we'll look at the Kilpatrick past for phonetic awareness skills that we can't always tease out through MEA. So, but that information is really important to us. While also having the lens of we're working small children who, you know, have short attention spans. And, you know, we, we balance the assessments when it's appropriate to be able to do them with students. MEA K2 really takes about 30 minutes for a student. Many students finish more, students finish faster than 30 minutes. Sometimes moving into the two, five assessment, students, it does take students a little bit longer if they've, you know, worked into that assessment, second, third grade on. But a lot of other, of our other probes that were intentionally, you know, using with students are one minute or less with a reading specialist or a mathematics interventionist.
And I, I would say we do use, we do use the data. My question has been just with the lack of structure we've had around SAS like last year, what I wanted the result that we got this year to be as accurate as possible. So trying to take away as many variables so that we could say, okay, this is in fact how we are doing. I feel confident that we've taken away all the possible variables. And then we can use that to figure out again cohorts, what those cohorts need, what individuals need. The MEA is another piece. We use it for math placement when we're talking about math, you know, sixth to seventh grade math placement. We're also always, anytime we're meeting with a parent or we're in a team discussing a student, we will look up their SAS, look up their MEA. It gives, I, I think for me, it's nice to have some different lenses, some different, different pieces of data to be able to say, huh, it's interesting. Like, you know, they have been going, I noticed a downward trajectory in math. Why is that happening? So having that data over a period of time has been helpful for sure.
Were they pushing about taking, oh, sorry. Were they pushing about taking test time, taking away from learning time?
Yeah, so like, does that, is that, is it, right, like, so?
I understand the question.
If we've lost however many hours that lost instructional time and that data that you gained worked that loss in instructional time.
So I mean, we know, there's some times we spend watching movies in class, right? Just learn mother cons and having sort of more social focused activities, right? So, I mean, well, you made a decision, but it seems like there, if you're really trying to get back a few hours a year, other ways to do it besides blaming testing and evaluation time. But if you want to get other time back too, we talked last, a couple weeks ago about snow days. Do you feel like if we were adding snow, if we were being clear about when snow days happen, like in December and January? If we were clear about that and saying, hey, we're going to make this up and you're teaching a time to budget that, that pay back in? Would that be beneficial for your seat time, learning time? Or does that have no effect?
I love snow days and I love instructional. Excuse me, somebody asked me that earlier, how I could go on snow days. So I've, I've shared my statement, that's my neutral statement.
Yeah, and right now we're sticking to the, yeah, in the full report.
I mean, more instructional time is always, is always wonderful, but I think the snow day brings, uh, snow day piece brings some complications in there. But that's what I would say.
Any other questions regarding, yes, Mr. White?
Actually, I'd like to hear a little bit more about letters training.
Sure.
Because I know that we have a really large group of teachers engaged in this and they seem, like even their social media posts being really excited and proud and sharing some of their successes. And I would love to hear a little bit more.
I'd be happy to talk about that. So Letters is being funded by the New Hampshire Education Department through a partnership with Lexia, which is a really phenomenal literacy organization that provides instructional resources, materials, educational software as well for students. But then also just has a phenomenal group of literacy specialists that are working to train educators throughout the United States. I, I guess I shouldn't even limit it to that, working to train educators throughout the world on the science of reading and the principles of understanding how to teach students how to read using a phonics based approach. The training through letters is intense. Teachers that are engaged in this are, you know, it, it's across 18 months where they're doing work outside of time that they're with groups, but then also participating in live Zoom sessions with educators throughout New Hampshire in other schools discussing specific content area related to, to reading. So they'll talk specifically about syllification or orthographic mapping and how exactly the brain works with understanding when you see text. The, we have a large cohort of educators who are really enthusiastic about participating in this. I'm participating in the Letters for Administrator training right now with the state too. So it was just a great opportunity and I'm so pleased to see so many of our teachers take advantage of this opportunity. And we've had earlier this year during one of our dedicated professional development series over like the winter session, we had a few of our educators that were participating elect to, you know, kind of be a cohort together and work through, you know, collaborating on what they were understanding from their coursework, how they were applying it in their classroom. The professional development is, is really high quality and just we're very fortunate that the state has provided funding to Lexia to provide this to educators throughout New Hampshire. So I'm, I'm really glad to see so many teachers take advantage of it.
Yeah, and we have administrators participating in the admin training as well. There's an administrator training that provides a really good overview of literacy, what you would expect to see in your classroom. And then a lot of professional development about supporting the change process. So it's been really good. I was able to predict Kathleen is, you did some work last year, invested in that, so.
Our, our preschool educators, there's an early childhood piece and they're, they're involved as well. It was a really great opportunity.
Yep, so now that, it sounds like, I mean, 18 months, so you're, you're still learning. I mean, eighteen months, so you're, you're still learning. So have we been able to apply because it's definitely one of our, one of our goals. Is that we're really focused on the receipt right now. And so have they been able to. Um, immediately apply any pieces of it beyond just their own personal learning.
Yeah. It's a, a great question. So I actually just had a conversation with a third grade teacher a couple of weeks ago after visiting her classroom during a foundation time. And she had attended letters a few days before. And as part of the coursework, they asked them to kind of. Um, put things in action in the classroom and see if they're noticing responses with students and then. Um, come back and, and talk about it with other educators. And so I think in small pieces, yes. As, as, uh, the educators are going through the series when it connects to what the learning is for the professional developments, they're applying it in the classroom. To kind of continue learn. And then all of these, um, teachers are going to have this knowledge as we embark on the next steps in our literacy work as a district. Um, you know, connected to our goals and the framework for progress where we want to find the highest quality resources. I think all of these teachers having. This great PD is going to be a really big piece of that too, right? We know it's not just. The physical materials that teachers have, it's their knowledge and how they use those materials to, uh, work with students is, is most important too.
Okay, so we will be taking it and, and looking at our programs and, and seeing how they can apply in a, in a broader sense. Okay. No, that's awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, can I, can I do an AMS?
Sure.
Um, I am really excited to start seeing, uh, the decorated. Jersey barriers. I don't know what you.
Yeah, they're barriers. They're concrete barriers. It's a concrete barrier from New Hampshire.
But I, I love that whole thought of, of, you know, upcycling and pride in your school. And I know that you've really been trying to foster. That all year long. And so I think it's just an extension of that. And I was also really excited to see all of the pictures, um. Of getting outside, like we, the PTA was able to fund some, some more seating outside and we're, we're doing that outside. We're doing ecology school. We were going to the Riverwalk there. All of these opportunities to really strengthen. Um, getting our, our middle learners, because we get our little kids out there a lot. And we focus so much on that, but I'm so happy to see the middle school doing the same and. I am super excited for the upcoming fiftieth, um, anniversary celebration, but. Like the display of that as well and just bringing everybody into it. And I feel like, have you been, what kinds of, um. Feedback have you been getting from the communities you've been reaching out?
Yeah, um, no, I think people are, uh, excited, um, about it. It's, you know, we've been trying to, of course, balance what we're, it's a school day. And we're trying to balance a celebration with a school day. So that's what we've been kind of, um, working on. Uh, I think just the buildup around it is going to be the, is the cool thing, like. Everybody's middle school photos on the wall. Uh, a certain superintendent has his middle school photo on the wall as well. Um, we even, yeah, everyone, everyone's got, everyone's involved. Uh, I have a very tenacious, um, main office staff. Who's been asking everybody for their middle school photos. So, uh, it's been really, really cool. Um, and. That's been really like people, students and staff are all stopping in the hallway, trying to guess who everybody is. Then. It is interesting to see like, you know, I was, I was in middle school in the nineties and I see the nineties. And it's funny because it's like, these are literally, I feel like I'm like sitting next to these people in class, like I could have gone to school with you and you, and you, because we all kind of look the same style, same. You know, um, so that's been, that's been really cool. I think that's been a, a staff community builder as well. Um, and the kids love guessing. Um, and the, um. The other piece too is, is just the spirit week that's coming, you know, that having the spirit week, a decade spirit week, the T-shirt, we've got logos all over the wall. We've got. Every, every staff has a pin on their lanyard, you know, just kind of building some excitement around it. So. Um, I think we've gotten, um, good feedback from our, our school community so far. Um, and just haven't had really an opportunity to, to bring in the outside community as much until the actual group itself. Right. And then we'll be able to. We have a scheduled forthcoming.
Well, and you gave someone a thank you, so I know my calendar, um, the lunch.
We have pizza lunch provided by the dining hall, by the cafeteria.
Now, I think just all. I, I know I say it every time, but, but all the pictures and, and I really love that, um. The special things going on this time of year, like the storytellers coming in and the Holocaust is always such. A really powerful presentation that continues to happen and a really important one. And so, um, when I see those come up each year, I'm like, yes, um, I miss the hunger. I, I, I hope that comes back at some point. I felt like that was a really, that was time most spent to really, to really bring a home for the kids. And to let them visualize that. So. I, if there's anything we can do to help support that coming back, I would love to see it. But, um, yeah, thank you for taking the time to share all these with us and with the community, all of, all of the things.
Anyone else?
Thank you both for your reports. I would like to, um, congratulate the cultural, the culture club of completing the Cinco de Riles five K. Culture and climate is critical, not just for staff morale, but students as well. So what a great healthy example of something to do. Together, um, in your off time for our students. And I saw some Clark Wilkins faces in that mix as well. So. That's exciting too, to kind of see that connection across our district. So good job. And I really appreciate the staff hiring summary. That you included in your report. Um, it, it was like really like, we see it kind of in, you know, bits and pieces as it comes through. So I appreciated how you. Provide us that summary. You've been really busy. Um, staffing alone, it's no small task. And I know you, you had an incredible process and team this year. So thank you again for that and all the updates and welcome to our newest Eagles. Um, and, and thanks to everyone involved in that process. I did want to also note that the AMS Jazz Band. Um, I got to see them perform here at South Keegan at Jazz Night and I was blown away. Not only did they perform well as an individual jazz band. But they held their own on the stage for the combined all high school, all middle school performance at the end. So. It's really fun to watch them soar. Um, Principal Gothier, thank, or Principal, um, Murphy, thank you for the connection between the local leadership and our principals quarter. Um, I really appreciate what you're doing there.
Yeah, thank you.
Those students. So that's, that's really exciting. Um, and, and the walk to school days is a really good idea on, on many levels. To, to help in the morning. So. That's great. Um, all right, moving right along then, we will now hear committee updates. Anyone have a committee update that they would like to share? I have a list of committees here, so. Uh, Ways and Means hasn't met, Manifest, I think you attended Manifest training.
I've been trained, I'm sure that I'm signing off, but I got the form, but it will not be sued. That's that one. And I signed my first forms, thank you guys.
Great. Well, thank you for doing that and taking that responsibility on. Uh, I see a budget committee we haven't done anything with yet. Policy has not yet, um, kicked off our season yet, so no updates there. For school maintenance and improvement committee?
Yes, we actually, I believe we're on the agenda with the. The modification to the lease agreement. We wanted to make clearer language around, um, making sure that we always apply the funds. That are part of the budget specifically to some of those longer term projects. And so each year we were having to like approve it separately. So we just wanted to fill that language in. And, um, we decided we could do it this cycle because it doesn't change the overall agreement. It just helps clarify.
Great. And that's later on our agenda. We're not going to get into the weeds of that. Great. Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, I think otherwise. Always work to be done, wishing that we had, uh, more ability to do more of it sooner, but, but yeah, we, we've had a productive year actually. There's a good thing's coming up.
Thank you. Uh, Building in Browns, would you like to give the update?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, we welcome new members to the committee. So Mr. Dart, Mr. Conforty and Mr. Strozier. And I'd like to thank Mr. Prince and Mr. Gothier for. Going through the applications and, and making those appointments. They each bring strong experience to the group with construction, construction law. And facilities management we organize for the upcoming year. Um, I'm pleased to report that Miss Chris, Christine Grayson. Accepted a nomination to chair, which was supported by the committee. Um, and SAU staff will take notes for us for our meetings as available. And I will serve as the backup secretary. And that's really the, the. Meat of the work that got done at that meeting. Um, we laid out the charge that we all discussed as a board. At our last meeting for the committee and they're receiving preparatory materials for our next meeting. All right. Next committee would be the property inventory committee.
So we did not meet, I'm gonna tell them to meet in July for us.
First meeting in July. Great. Uh, and finally, the wellness committee. Have you all, have any updates there?
I'm. Want me updated? I paid the form. So, um, next week is wellness week in SAU thirty nine. So tomorrow we'll send out a flyer with the five activities. Monday, we're asking all the staff in SAU thirty nine to take a survey. So we can plan for next year. Uh, Tuesday, it's a one minute and thirty nine second mindful minutes. It was still in practice and going all in. I say you why. So at, at a time, uh, we're gonna, everybody's gonna stop to take a moment to breathe. Uh, Wednesday is walking Wednesday. We're gonna ask everybody to take a walk, either if you're comfortable with your kids, take them out or after work and we'll go to work. Thursday is thirsty Thursday, a good kind of thirsty Thursday. That's a lot of force. We ask everybody to, uh, drink a little bit more water on Thursday than they usually do. And Friday is Fun Food Friday. Uh, where all our, um, nutrition staff, Crystal's doing great. She's going to have samples and recipes of healthy foods available. Great. Samples to all our staff and all our kitchens all over this place. Um, and so we're just, uh, we're, we're trying to get a little publicity for our, our wellness group. Next year, we're, it's like, we're gonna try and have a, uh, L, uh, like two different, every other month. Um, it was tough. We did this one at three thirty. Um, so I think that at the elementary, those who get out at two thirty will meet one month and then three thirty month and we'll combine. But. Um, we do have a presence and we met our policy obligations this year by the wellness committee meeting as required. Looking forward to everybody stopping for one minute and thirty minutes.
Thank you. Great. Following along with our agenda.
And more updates. Sorry, I, I was rep to the selectmen, but I wanted to tell you all that, um, I met with our. Other side and we just talked about how to interact a lot from the, the properties we're gonna talk about later on, I think during July. Uh, we also talked about security, that plays a role between the two groups. So, um, we may be invited to. Meet with the, uh, uh, police along with the selectmen at a school, town, uh. Oh, discussion. Apologize if that's not, that happens.
Great.
That's it.
Awesome. Thank you for the update. And Mr. White, I think you are the liaison to the planning board. Did you have anything there? Okay, I didn't have everything listed, so thank you.
CIP too, and that one's.
Yeah, that has, yeah, yeah, I'm, as well. Okay, super great. Now we will move along. Um, next on our agenda, we will appoint a deputy treasurer. So Ms. CJ Butler has graciously agreed to take on this role. Thank you to Ms. Butler. Is there any discussion? Okay, saying none at this time, I will take a motion to appoint CJ Butler as deputy treasurer. Would anyone like to make that motion? Miss Bean and a second, Mr. White, thank you. All right. So, uh, it is moved and seconded to appoint Ms. CJ Butler as deputy treasurer. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, I will call the vote. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving right along. Next up on our agenda is a discussion regarding co-curricular stipend increases. As a reminder, this complies with article thirteen point six of the CBA, which states the board shall grant a salary increase on an annual basis. So two percent was budgeted for FY twenty five. As such, administration is recommending a two percent increase. Superintendent Barry, is there anything you would like to add here? Is there any discussion?
It's a, it's a question, so. Thank you, my source, dear, I have your page on the screen here. Um. So I'm interested in what happens here. So we pass, we put a warrant article up, the people vote for it, it's a three year contract. Right? And that included these, like.
Okay, their management. The only thing the contract says, we have to, shall.
Right.
A warning.
Okay.
Nothing warranted amount, it could be zero point one one percent.
I thought that when we, now this is a method, but I thought we had seen on the warrant as like, here's the projection for year one, year two, year three. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
What is that?
That is for salaries a bit.
Okay. Okay. Great. So this is something that we do every year separately. It's an annual thing we're doing.
That is correct.
And it's the board level. Thanks. Yeah, I understood that part. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all.
So it's, it's actually to the advantage. That the co-cur, so some, some districts that I came from had the co-curricular stipends in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
And that was.
Okay.
So this is actually a management.
Oh, really?
Okay. It's a, it's a, it's more positive management, it's more flexible.
Right, gotcha.
Uh, the only thing it's, it's funky is it has this word shall. Typically, management says may. But it shall, so it has to be done.
And that's what budget is paid out of, is the one we're ending or the one rule? This is for next year. It'll be next year.
We budgeted.
Gotcha.
So in the Trello, there's, um, a spreadsheet that, uh, Kathleen did, Kristen did. Uh, for AMS and Kathleen, they, they synced the amounts, which was nice so that, um, they're aligned.
Everybody did a great job.
Yes, it was a lot of work.
And codifying this and having this, this was pitch.
Any other discussion? Those are great questions. I had a lot of questions last year too, when we did this for, when I did this for the first time. Would someone like to make a motion to increase the co-curricular stipend by two percent as budgeted? Mr. White makes the motion. May I have a second? Sure. Miss Bean, seconds, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to increase the co-curricular stipend by two percent. Saying no discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is the FY twenty five grant general assurance and program assurances. Uh, each year, the New Hampshire Department of Education develops general assurances, requirements and definitions for participation in federal program documents. That must be signed by all agencies and organizations that receive federal funds through the NHED. The federally funded programs that flow money through the NHED require each applicant to file certain assurances. Some of these assurances apply to all programs and are therefore considered general assurances. We did all receive a copy of the general assurances. So at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Barry for any questions that you all need. Does anyone have any questions about what is expected with the general assurances? Oh, great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Then at this time, um, I would like to ask for a motion to authorize the school board chairperson to sign the general assurances. On behalf of the school board with the understanding of the school board's obligations, including those enumerated in RSA one eighty nine. Colon, one dash eight and pursuant to the school board's oversight of federal funds. May I have the motion? Okay, Miss Bean makes the motion. May I have a second? Mr. White seconds. Any discussion? It has been moved and seconded with no discussion to authorize school board chairperson to sign the general assurances on behalf of the school board. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You, moving right along. Next on our agenda. Is the brick school lease agreement, which Terry mentioned in her committee update, a revision to that. I will, um, turn the floor over to Ms. Business Administrator Facy to lead this discussion.
Sure. So yeah, Terry, um, gave a great update on, um, some of the work that the brick school improvement committee has been doing. Um, as part of that work, um, the committee wanted to take a look at the existing lease agreement. And you'll see in your board packet and also in Trello, the lease agreement and. Just one section highlighted in red, which is where the changes are made. It's in section eight.
There.
Yep, that's great. Um, so. These, um, these paragraphs were in the prior lease agreements. We're really just adding them back in. They were removed. Um, so just to highlight the changes that we wanted to add back in. Um, as part of the audit two years ago, the auditors, uh, noted that the brick school reserve account was not designated. As assigned or signed, um, for audit purposes, so that if there were funds left in that account. Um, there wasn't clear direction on what to do with them. They either, they, they should be classified either as lying back to offset. Taxes or being able to be set aside and stay into that reserve account. So the FAU board voted to, uh, in last year's audit to assign those at, or to classify them as assigned. For audit purposes and, um, the brick school committee. Um, just also made the determination that we should memorialize that, uh, that practice in. that we should memorialize that, uh, that practice in the lease agreement, so that those funds will always be set aside in a reserve account. Uh, the paragraph also does set a limit though to fifty thousand dollars, which, uh, was discussed and determined as a reasonable amount to keep in the account, similar to the capital reserve account that, uh, that the board keeps in the facilities account of a hundred thousand per building. So we thought, uh, with Roger's advice, fifty thousand was a reasonable amount. Um, the lease agreement also adds budget language to a line of purpose of the funds to the Brick School C I P, um, uh, document that Roger has, uh, has created and is being reviewed by the Brick School Improvement Committee, so that you actually have a list of all the projects that are going to be worked on. Um, the prior agreement just had a schedule with all of the projects, but that didn't allow for any flexibility if projects were changed. So I think something needs to be replaced, but then we had that not even to them, there wasn't that flexibility. So, uh, that, uh, the C I P is linked to the language in the lease agreement. Um, the establishment and makeup of the Brick School Improvement Committee language was also removed from, from the agreement, so we just added that back in, so that we have that, uh, within the lease agreement. And then the final paragraph just has some language, uh, in the event of emergency repairs and, uh, and fund this. So the committee reviewed these and, uh, wanted to bring this to the board, uh, for approval. And then this will go to the S A U board, uh, as well, because those are the two parties. Did I capture everything, Terry?
I think you did a great job. And I'm glad you did it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
As I was saying, I think, but I'd see in the least like a dollar amount, money change hands from the S A U account pay the Hammer School floor.
Section three.
I think it's right in the beginning.
Broad. Oh, um, one dollar, that's in advance for a five-year even building.
Yeah.
All right, next time I'll double that.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
You buy the brick.
The church, so we can one dollar for the land of the annex.
Yeah, that too, that comes out of the principal's son. All right.
Any other question? Okay, so are we looking for a motion to approve the lease then?
Yeah, we're very, the whole, they're just the changes in the lease, right? The red, red one.
Yeah.
The lease itself was signed, like, I, I can do one thing, just legally. So with the lease was signed as a five-year lease, looks like, and it's wired to twenty six.
Yeah.
Right, so.
But we can open it up.
It both have the grade, is.
Yeah. So then, to your point, would it be a motion to accept the amendment to the lease agreement? Yeah, yeah, okay, so, um, at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the amendments to the existing lease agreement for the first. Mr. White makes that motion, do I have a second? Miss Bean seconds, any further discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, it's been moved and seconded to accept the, um, amendments to the current lease agreement for the S A U thirty nine Brick School. Seeing no further discussion, I will call the vote, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Okay, great, and, um, next item on our agenda, um, Business Administrator Facy, you are on deck again. Um, yeah, let's see here, um, you'll provide an update on the unassigned fund balance and the revised end of year potential project list. Um, so just to be clear, there's no action taken on this this evening, we're just resuming an update.
Right, and does everyone have access to Trello?
Okay.
On the, I didn't heard of Trello.
Okay, that's fine, I can share. You know, one thing that I've never seen is a, is a really quick Trello training. I know, I have so many different applications to use for so many different things. If there's like a link to a little webinar or something, that would be awesome.
Are you doing the fund balance first? Protection.
Yes.
It's a P D A, right? Terry, are you on Trello right now? Can you see it?
I'm not on it.
Have we, we're gonna put it up there too.
Yeah, we can put it up.
There it is.
Okay, so it's projected on the screen, if you don't have it on, if you're not in Trello and don't have it, um, Business Administrator Facy has kindly posted this on the screen for us to see. And, uh, folks watching at home can also follow along.
Yeah, so there's not a huge change from, uh, last one, but, um, we're projecting a, a bit more in fund balance. Uh, we have about a hundred and fifty-five thousand projected in, uh, additional revenue and six seventy-five, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred in saving and expenditures for a total of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, we had.
You know, great.
Oh, okay.
You don't have Zoom anymore? Oh, oh, Zoom, yeah, I can do Zoom, you were in Zoom instead. And three different things, Washington's meeting.
Um, so there are sufficient funds to fund the three warrant articles. We had the capital facilities expendable trust fund for six seventy-five, the technology for seventy-five and the, and thirty thousand for the vehicles, so that's seven eighty, so we have funds for that. Uh, the remainder of the funds would be used to offset tax rate. Um, and at this point, we don't have, um, all those funds projected to offset what we predicted, but it is still early, we're very conservative at this point, so we do expect this number, um, to increase. So the idea is in June, we will have better numbers, um, and be able to have, uh, a closer projection. We won't really know until the year ends, June thirtieth, but we will have a, a closer projection. So at this point, we don't see funds for projects, however, that, that may change and we'll be bringing a recommendation to you in June, um, for how to handle that. So with that, if, wanna go to the unsent fund balance project list? So we did a little extra work on this, um, past day to prioritize these projects by level. So what will, this just gives you some information, so you can take a look and ask questions on what any of these items are. Uh, uh, and we can find out more information for you if needed. But the idea would be to fund level one projects first, uh, and depending on what we have available, uh, try to piece it together to get the most that we can, um, for the projects. So level one projects are safety and efficiency. So you'll see, uh, of course, the, the passenger van that we've all been hoping will have money for, uh, replacing portable ramps at Wilkins, uh, some science chemical disposal and bollards for the kitchen delivery area. We've had drivers hitting, uh, kitchen vents, unfortunately, so this is to prevent that. Uh, level two, we're classifying that as facility and educational priorities. So there are some gym chairs for table, I just put these in order of dollar. N P R sound system replacements, some bookcases, some playground equipment, boiler pump rebuilt, replacement, cafeteria tables and some additional chairs. And then finally, uh, category or level three, which is, we're, we're calling this climate. So some painting in the library cafeteria, uh, the P E audio system and projector and new sign over the name that's at A and S. So we will, uh, bring both of these documents to the board next month, updated and hopefully have a better idea if we have funds and, um, we'll be asking the board to consider, uh, funding any potential projects out of assigned fund balance if available, after we meet our tax rate, uh, offset.
Was the van, missed the van. So, we ordered, um, in December, we talked about ordering a van, cancel without any fee, out of fund balance. What we found last year, the collaboration with, so Egan, we could actually save money for this low, small number teams, volleyball.
I remember that.
So that's what we're trying, we're trying to purchase a van, so we can save some money, be more efficient, buy better transportation for co-curriculars or other.
Okay. So we would own the van as a business.
Yes, so Egan would use it or not. Yeah, we, there's some collaboration, if they share this, like, yeah, if, if we're going to the same place, we take two vans. It's a good relationship we have. But I mean.
Mr. White.
One, one good one. Um, so this just might be my misunderstanding, so is, it's sixty-one thousand dollars for the van, is this separate from, and then we also put on one? This is, this is above or beyond that. Yes, we did throw the budget. I just, cause I know that that was one of our, have like a, lack of better term of knowledge, capital reserve fund for the.
Yeah, yeah, it's called the vehicle.
You know, we dropped, what, fifteen?
Thirty.
Thirty, yeah, a couple years. Yeah, so we're trying, so basically, whatever is up to, we fund that first and then we'll add the sixty-one thousand more.
So we have the money to fund the, the, uh, vehicle box.
Yeah, the thirty thousand.
We do have that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Facy?
What's your best guess? With wrong. I've asked that question a million times. I remember pretty high there.
That would be surprising, you end up.
In the, this will your ends, June thirtieth.
Anyone else? I appreciate the buckets, that was really helpful.
Um, yeah, that was Steve's.
That was, that's great. Last year I was a little unclear as to how things were sort of falling in the order of priority, so.
Yeah.
That helps, uh, me understand kind of your thinking on that, so I appreciate that.
That, that's a, that's an improvement from Sir Chamberlain.
All right, moving on, next item on the agenda is the N H S B A delegates assembly. Uh, the dates for twenty twenty-four aren't posted yet, so I would like to move that we hold this item for discussion at our next meeting, unless you have an objection to that. Okay, we're all good, perfect, so we'll move back to our next meeting. All right, so next up, uh, we have a personnel discussion, which will be led by Superintendent Barry.
Yes, Jim, so there's, uh, typically two parts to the personnel at this board meeting. First, it's kind of an update on, uh, resignations and, and, uh, nominations and, and, um, as of today, we do not, we're in the middle of the hiring process, as you learn from the principal reports, but we do not have any, uh, nominations to bring tonight, this evening, you know, for staff. Um, and we're gonna continue on with that, uh, we are in the, in the, in the midst of that, that could change, as, as people know pretty quickly, you know, as, as things kind of take form. Uh, we'll keep you updated on, on that, uh, we still have positions to fill, both at Clark Wilkins and A M S, so that'll be ongoing. Um, and the, the second part of, uh, the personnel is, uh, I'd like to have a non-public session where we talk about administrative valuation and, and contract status, uh, of our administrators in, uh, the Hammer School District, so we'll get that a little bit later. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving right through the agenda. Um, we now have on our agenda a start and end time discussion, so this piggybacks the broader discussion that took place at the April thirtieth S A U meeting, um, at which time it was determined that we would not pursue any changes to the schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but that we would send the discussion back to the individual boards for additional discussion as desired. Um, it will be an agenda item on the May twenty-third S A U meeting. I believe that the S A U, um, leadership here is, is in the process of doing some work regarding, um, some universal start time information, so we will see that next month. So, um, I'm curious if anyone has any new or additional items around this topic beyond what was voiced at the April thirtieth meeting? Mr. White?
I still hate this conversation, that's not gonna change.
No.
Uh, what I would like to say is, I, some of these conversations, I really feel like we need to simplify whatever our goals are in the, um, right, framework for progress, because that's the lens that we should be using to make these decisions, right? So because we had a lot of public comment about an S E L thing, well, that, we haven't necessarily adopted that as a role, and if we could, we should, then we should, and use that as a lens, right? So right now, one of the things is instructional time, well, so where you, if those are our goals, we should be using our goals as the lens by which we make decisions. But I don't want to have those.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add to this portion of our agenda? Okay. Yes, Miss Bean?
The only thing I think is that we, we had said that while we had smoothed it out some things and that overall, our elementary definitely favored keeping them as is, but that our, our middle school was not as much in favor of it, and so I would like us to take a look at what we can still do to support making it work better at our middle school. And so that's something that, I'm, I'm sorry that they, they've already left at the night, but that's really where we're wanting to say, okay, we know we haven't had a year of it, what can we do to smooth out the rough edges of this and make it as successful as we can for everybody?
Okay. Our final public agenda item for the evening is a discussion regarding our board specific goals. So, um, Chairman Gauthier shared a, a really rough draft document, um, just to begin the conversation. Again, I just want to reiterate, it's just a draft upon which to work from. Within all of the districts this year, we're making a concerted effort to build our goals, to build our goals around the framework for progress. Um, so similar to the S A U board meeting, tonight, we're just opening the conversation. Um, and asking that each board member submit specific thoughts, ideas to Chairman Gauthier or to myself, and we can pull them all together into a concise document for further discussion, revision and acceptance at our next meeting. Um, so with that, um, not to shorten the conversation, because I want to have it, but it, it can, it can go all different directions. Um, so we're trying to put a little bit of a framework around it. Uh, does anyone have any additional thoughts that you would like to share? Maybe we can project the draft document that I referenced, um, if you don't mind, Mr. Chamberlain.
There it is.
Thank you. Um.
I'm sorry, this, this is above this discussion, in terms of, can you help me understand what happened last year's, last year's goals? How, how are, how are you measuring yourself against these? And, and this question comes from my view of this role of, you know, the, the, the voters have goals, they put us, they put us here. In my, in my worldview currently, willing to change it, my worldview is that the voters have goals, they pick the candidates they want to represent that serve on this board. We, that's how we have a plea, right? We should be having goals for that plea, but it just, help me understand what's going on here, like, why are we laying goals for ourselves? We were told, we have your mandates, we came to this job from, to have real power, the voters, and we should be putting goals on, on super, like, it's my first take of all this, so help me understand what we're doing.
Sure, so I think the intention and, and folks have been up here longer than I have, feel free to chime in. I had the pleasure of presiding as my chair of the board discussion. Sure. So I think the intention and that folks have been up here longer than I have, feel free to chime in. I had the pleasure of presiding as my chair of the discussion for the first night. Um, I think the intention behind board goals is really just to help us have focus our work for the year. Our goals and the goals of the superintendent are tightly um connected, right? Which is why we're making this effort to make certain that we, we have all supported the framework for progress, which is what uh. This may have been before you.
Yeah.
This was before you.
Okay.
Um, so, so we're, we're building our goals around that and just to keep us focused for the year. I mean, it's really just kind of a, a guiding. Document, we're putting it, and we're trying to make it more formal than I think it has been previously by putting all of this. Putting the pen to paper and really helping us to stay on track. So. That's my take. Um, I'm, oh, I'm happy to refer to Mister Wyder, Miss Bean.
Yeah, sure. I would also, I mean, I, I mean, no one here is served longer than Terry, so if she wants to go, she can. But I mean, my thought is hon- honestly, Greg, last, last year, the goals, we didn't, we didn't really focus on them. We didn't really pay much attention to them. And uh. Year prior, when I was on the board, we, we didn't serve either, and things kind of went astray. And that's why I, I, earlier, my hope is that we can. Create goals, because this is a really great start, create goals that we can regularly focus on, and that we're. To your point, it, I think the goals, these ones are far more designed than ones previously. To make sure we're monitoring what's happening in the district, to make sure that it makes progress. Um, I mean, I have ideas about this, I have some. Questions, and, and uh again, might be to your point, Greg, like, I think something might need to be more specific that we might, right, so I'm. I think Steve just said in the past, I'm trying to put words in your mouth, Steve, so if I'm wrong, something. But like, when we're looking at literacy and mathematics, like eighty percent or better should be efficient, right? So that we might want to codify and say like, that's the goal. That's, that's what we're shooting at. Would have a baseline, where we are on the measures that we're using. Um. So that's my view of goals. I think this is a step in the right direction with it, this focus.
Yeah.
And that's my biggest take as well. It's just really just to help us stay, stay focused and on track as a board. Obviously, we have our, you know, mandated obligations. Um, and, and then what other things are happening during these meetings so that we can keep them moving in the right direction. Miss Bean, do you have anything to offer? I think the longest tenured board member here. Longest serving.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that that's exactly it, is that it helps us to say, there are a million things we could be doing, but how do we focus our efforts? And how do we measure, you know, what's happening? And so I like that this say, it spills out, you know, we're, we're going to get. Certain things that we're looking at, and that's how we, how, when we're measuring. And how often are they going to report out? And, and how, because you can't say, I mean, we have had some in the past where it's like every month. They were giving presentations on things. Sometimes we said once a quarter, and so you really have to say, it depends on goal, or how often you do this. So I think that right now, because at an, at an S A U level, there really are things that can apply across the board and should. That here at, at our district, to say, well, how does that translate for our learners? And for our districts. So even though we have S A U wide things, these are ones that say, how are we tracking out what's going for us and for our groups?
Mind if I build off that?
Sure.
No, I think that's well said. And so with the, with the framework. Design was, as in, you know, as superintendent, I'm an employee of the S A U. And each district has superintendent services that we provide. Um, and so as I was looking at S A U. Areas of focus and, and goals that we want to accomplish. As it applies to each district. So as a superintendent, we provide superintendent services to each district. We collaboratively came together and said, all right, what are the areas? And so for, for us, you know, we, we identified improvement in growth in literacy, you know, in mathematics. I think that applies to all three districts, all four schools. I think as we take a look at uh, you know, instructional time, I think that applies, but applies differently to all three districts and, and all four schools. Same way as supervision and evaluation. Those, and then we obviously have strengthened partnerships and communications. There, so you're looking at five areas plus facilities that it doesn't matter what district we're in, each school board can develop goals that support that work. And the superintendent will have goals at the S A U level that. You know, at, where I'm evaluated on that are connected to the framework, which are connected to the board goals. And each building will have building goals that are connected to the framework. Each principal will have principal goals that are connected to the framework. So what it does, as an S A U for me, it keeps us. All working in the same areas in a, in a succinct, organized manner. It applies differently from. Mount Vernon to here, South Eagan. It applies differently depending on the grade level, pre-K through twelve. And so we wanted to give the flexibility. However, Jason, to your point, we did say, hey, we would like the outcome of our, our. Our literacy work is to be proficient uh across, you know, by eighty percent. We also say we want to have growth. Goal for that is ten percent growth. We think next year, ten percent growth in literacy as we aspire for eighty across the board. Because we'll have some pockets of grades that might go from fifty five to sixty five, you know, in literacy and math, you know? Fourth grade might be at eighty percent, but fifth grade might be at seventy two percent. So. You know, for me, it's, it's putting, to your point, measurable outcomes in areas. And I think the board, as you look to your drafting, you guys will kind of figure out what works for you as you support the work of. Of the superintendent as we try to implement, you know, the, the framework across three districts and in all the schools. Um. But I do think every board, every school, every principal can find their way with into this. This area. And I think if you put these efforts into it, we get the outcomes of high achievement and then, you know, kind of whole student type. Aspirations that we have here. It is something that we intentionally do both. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but, and, and, uh, but that's kind of how. It's complicated, right? You know, it, it's not one district and, 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 and one superintendent. It's one S A U, one superintendent, three districts. Right? So.
There've been years where. Each board has kind of gone off on their own way, and there's no way for a single S A U to really meet all of that if there's not some. And so it's really meant to say, if we don't align and then have it be specific to our grade levels and our, our circumstances. Um, it's just setting everybody up for failure, because they can't do everything for everyone if it's so scattered. And so that's why really going back to agreeing at that high level and then drilling down for our specific piece works much better. Than, than saying, oh, no, that's great for you. But we want to be doing something totally different and taking their attention, because then splitting their time is really difficult, right? So it's, it's helpful that we can all get to agreement on the high level things, and then we get to the specifics with our own.
Any more discussion around that this evening? Mister White?
Yeah, I just had one kind of question, and I'm not sure. For whom?
We have to go.
But I kind of, again, I, I mentioned it earlier, we don't. We say whole student and we say, you know, we spend some, you know. Good bit of time in our schedules with S E L stuff and with S E Ls. We haven't necessarily formalized in S E L, and I know that's like exceptionally difficult to measure. Formalized. Is that something that we do because research tells us strong S E L will lead to better academic outcomes? So we just assume it's. Kind of.
Kind of same, or is it something that we should tease out and have an explicit?
That, that is, it's a, it's a really good question that when we were designing this, we talked at, at, at length about it and uh. And so as we took a look at goal board framework, and it, it, it's talking about continuing improvement in structural practices. And kind of a priority there um. Is, you know, creating supportive classroom and school environments that meet all of students' social emotional needs. We kind of left it there, because we do think this is, this is an area that we need to focus on. I, I will say that I think the systems in place, you know, at, it's called C W and A M S as far as. Um, mindful minute, launchpad, win, responsible classroom practices. We, we have systems in place that do this work.
Right.
And so we left it there because as our priority, it's a priority for us, but where are we? In, in collaboration with the principals and building administration, felt that they were in pretty good. Situations to carry on what they're doing. And so we wanted to leave it there. And say if we want to evolve that, because it's still a big part of what we do. Uh, but some of the other areas of priority for about, you know, evidence-based instructions. You know, identifying learning gaps through, you know, some of the curriculum reviews and some of the analysis of data. Yeah, we want to put a little more emphasis on that. Or if you look at the framework, we said, hey, spring of this semester through next year. So as the year goes on, if we want to put more of an emphasis on this, because this is a living document.
Right.
Right? And determining like how we are doing, we can do that. And, and I think. Uh, always open to conversation to, to evolve this living document. Um, but I do think, I, I, and I'm biased, I think the four goals. But you know, are, are, are types, it's something I've been talking about these areas since I got into education. Instructional practices, literacy, and math. And it's evolving those to meet the needs of where you're currently at as a school and a district. And it has to reflect the values of the community. And so I, I'm right there with you. I think we will get to formalizing some sort of outcome. I would love to get into a long conversation about how you measure that.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I, and that is, that is something.
I started exploring that, that a little bit. There are two things up at Mount Vernon, um, the school counselor who pushes in to teach guidance lessons, as we also have at um. At Wilkins, um, has actually been doing some data collection really for their school goals in this area. So that's something we could look at. It's a little easier to manage on a smaller scale. Like up at Mount Vernon, but that certainly could be part of a future conversation. Um, the other thing is responsive classroom actually has an assessment tool, but it's part of their social emotional learning curriculum. Which is extremely expensive. And years ago, we actually um had gone with the second step for our, um, you know, guidance. Curriculum of, of curricular materials, I should say. And that is a very solid program, has an anti-bullying component, which is uh a required component, component that we need to have. So we've really stuck with that. Doesn't mean we couldn't continue with exploring that assessment tool. So there are tools out there that exist, if this is something you're really trying to quantify a little bit more and, and. Then look at progress towards, um, but very early stages of those discussions.
Yeah, I guess I would say yes and no. I guess for me, again, I, I said this earlier, I should probably stop. Um, is I really. Kind of really reflect a lot on like kind of how I've been as a board member. And I really want to make my decisions based on like, okay, these, these are the goals that we've set. This is what the data says based on our goals. And so then this is the decision that we should be making, which we think it's made to. You know, help me. And so, you know, we hear lots of conversation about the students are anxious, like that. So. And just so, I guess for me, it's like, okay, it's there, it's in the war, so me, I feel kind of like. Part of the decision plans. And, and I think it should be part of the decision, I don't want to be clear about that, but it's.
You know, Mike and I. I appreciate what you're saying.
Sorry, Mike and I talked about this a lot before. Some of these areas were operating from a deficit.
Hmm.
And so when we will no longer operate of a deficit. No longer will have this goal.
Right, yeah, oh, I.
Like I, you know, I love instruction, not going to have two hundred and sixty days of instruction.
Two hundred and sixty five.
Right, you know? Um, but we just got to get to a place where the board. This is, is believes that we've reached the better, best for this community practice. I hope that instructional time goes on. Kind of like, you know, in, in South Eagan. In this, in the next P P C agreement, we had four instruction. And then should PD do. That's, we're getting pretty close, especially with the, you know, if a mandate, if you have to start after Labor Day. That to get to, to a hundred and seventy nine days after Labor Day? And I'm not, no matter what, I'm not a June twenty seventh guy, we're going to be sitting in a ham truck. Not a June twenty seventh. So. You know, we might kind of talk about like, you know, you've got to say.
So, but I, I, I will say this, uh, by observation, this is a fruitful conversation. I think you are trending in the right way about the mind around the goals. And where the board can support the work of the schools and the superintendent. And uh, so I do appreciate it, and if I can contribute to the conversation, as you still continue knocking around, let me know.
Christopher.
I do, right.
Yes.
I will, I would say that I appreciate it. I, I still. And I appreciate every you're saying about the details of the framework. I just feel like we should not reflect. The framework. We should, we can echo it. And then have it be aligned, but I don't, I'm hopeful the idea of like saying that. Super report and now we're going to adopt it. So I just. Minor, maybe it's minor, but to me, it's most obviously significant. Um, and then second. Um. Then I just want, I just want to give like a little speech or something. I want to talk about. Outcomes in this. Um, goal in some way, I know we were talking about it a little bit. And I heard the discussion in those seats for a while, and. I think there's been a lot of focus on test scores and why technically they're good, why test scores are imperfect. And a lot of that has been, I think, good for me to hear. And I agree that test scores are good and imperfect. Um, and I come from a worldview of, I can speak louder than words. And so what I remember that is, we have a, say that there's a third grader who tests not proficient. And we pass that student on. That student probably per- presented in our worldview, because of all the interactive teacher, all the constant. You know, high performance they've done throughout the year, they had, they had a bad test score, right? And so like, there's a lot of like that, that are testing, you know, fifty percent of kids roughly that are not proficient by the standard testing, but we think they are proficient when passed forward. So. I'd like to. Understand what is the Amara School District's. Measure of a proficient student, because it's clearly not just test scores. If we did that, half of the data would be, we don't, we're not doing that. And we don't believe that's right. I think it's what we all believe. So I don't have an answer, but that's like my framing of what's been this last couple of years on the outside is, I'd like to develop some way to say. We've got, you know, teacher observation, we've got maybe homework, we've got standardized testing, all these things. And we have our own view of what efficient third grader means, and it's not just. One task. Is that a fair speech?
Yeah, I think it's actually great work for us to deep dive into at our board retreat. Uh, because I think that's a, a, a long conversation, and I would love to have it as well. Um, does that?
Yeah, so as we get closer to it. So as we get closer to it, we will work with the boards to prepare for their retreats, you know, because you don't want to start fresh when you get there. So. You'll see some, some um information going out between now and the retreat. Uh, to discuss, you know, how we can create an agenda and then get some information so we can have meaningful conversations around the topics. And this could be, you know, definitely one of, so I'll add.
And I think if you think of anything else like that, um. Chairman Gauthier's not here, so I'm going to say send ideas, you know, things that you, that are meaty that you would like to see on an upcoming agenda.
Okay.
To, to talk.
And, and one more point, sorry, the last one, promise.
Okay, can we go to Terry and then?
Absolutely.
Okay, you can finish. You're good. Okay, go ahead.
Our last one, I promise, is I didn't see anything on here about cost to tact there. So I, and I don't know how to measure that. We've seen reports public, I published. Or other groups about cost per student or cost for, for, for our, our outcome or something like that. But I'd like to see some kind of understanding of how we're communicating. Or I never got to put as well as our top, how those things.
For one of our, for one of our.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. So when you send your.
That'll be.
Yeah, just however you want to see that, because again, this is just a super really rough draft, and I think it would be. In my, in my mind, putting some sort of budgeting goal as a board for us is, is appropriate. All set?
I'm done, thank you.
Miss Bean.
Um, I think it's a great start, and I think that I very much would like us to be aligned with framework. I think it's appropriate. The one area that I would like to see us do a little bit of discussion about and consider, um, that is specific to. Specific to our district in one way, but, but not really, because. The age of our students, we have a lot of transitions that go on. We have transitions. You come from Clark Wilkins or from a private kindergarten, for those who choose not to go to Clark. We go from elementary to middle, we go from, from Mount Vernon to our middle school, and then we go from our middle school. To our high school. And I think that we've made great progress in a lot of those transitions, but I want us to really take a thoughtful look at any support we can do. And one of the things that has really been successful, I think, is in giving more leadership opportunities to our younger students. Is in giving more leadership opportunities to our younger students. But one thing that we have not adopted, and I think that, um, it was brought up by somebody who subs in both, in both districts. In South Eagan and in ours, says, why can't we do South Eagan six at AMS, for example? We know they're heading in that direction, they would be appropriate for that age group, um, why couldn't we adopt it in ours? And we wouldn't call it South Eagan six, I guess, we would call it whatever, but I would love for us to look at maybe, um, embracing that. And really getting our kids ready, and, and thinking in that mindset, because it's very different when you're able to point to it. Just like we want to be able to point to our core goals and go, here you go, is it a goal, is it not? Does it, does this serve that goal? Well, for them, when you're asking for behaviors, when you're asking for reactions to things, if you're able to point to, hey, does it serve the state agency six? It's very effective at the high school, and I see no reason that it wouldn't be appropriate at the age level at middle school as well. So I'd like us to look at that and really consider, um, whether we should adopt it. I feel like it would be a positive thing, and it would, it would both serve them in the middle school, and then prepare them as they go up to the, the high school, so.
Just call it the sense.
Yeah.
Could you, uh, would you, when you send your comments back to Tom, just, I don't want to lose it as we're trying to roll everything together for the next meeting, will you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else, then, so we're all clear kind of on our next steps with this? Awesome.
And it's gonna be at our retreat when we talk about it more in depth, or at the next meeting in general?
Is that the next meeting?
Uh, I, I think we're, you're gonna see, you're gonna see, it takes a while to get there. We're planning, we're planning on time, you know, so you will have time at the next meeting. And you also probably will not be done with that, and, 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 you know, as we kind of tweak it and continue to work on it. It's something that can take form over the summer, because then at that point, that will influence some of the superintendent's goals. As, as the, uh, superintendent thirty-nine, which then in turn will influence building principal and building groups. So that's kind of how we are doing this.
Yeah, and I look forward to, to formalizing this process, um, a- and also, you know, we talked a little bit about, I'll just tease this here. Um, creating a rhythm of the year, right? So sometimes, you know, each month, like knowing as a board member what to expect, right? Oh, this is the month we receive this report, um, so this is all in an effort to kind of get us there. But, but we're still in the, the mix of it, if, if that makes sense. Okay, so there's no one in the room, I'm going to open up, uh, the floor for our final public comment of the evening, according to our agenda here. Uh, no one in the room, if there is anyone participating virtually online who would like to address the board. Please raise your virtual hand, you will be moved to panelist, at which time, please turn on your camera, have your full name in the avatar. State your name and town of residence, and you will have three minutes, is there anyone online wishing to address the board?
No hands.
Seeing no one, we do have a need for a non-public.
And also after non-public, we have a, like to have a non-meeting.
Yep, as posted on our agenda, we do have a non-meeting scheduled after our non-public. Um, but so right now, um, we have a need for a non-public requested under ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman numeral two. C, reputation, to discuss administrative evaluations, uh, would anyone like to make the motion to go into non-public? Okay, thank you, Mr. White, for making that motion, um, can I have a second? Miss Bean on the second, uh, so it has been moved and seconded to enter into non-public under ninety-one A three. Roman numeral two, section C, I will call the vote. Favor?
Um, don't have to roll call.
Oh, yes, roll call, but, but, thank you.
Amy, wait, who's on that, okay?
Uh, yes.
For instance, wait, yes.
Okay, motion carries, we will now enter into non-public.